Like the Gendarme.
I'm here.
Yeah, the Gendarme Mayor Council Meeting of Monday, June 22nd, 2020. And has been our tradition here in Berlind Town Hall for many, many years. I would like to begin the meeting with signing the Lord's Prayer. Would you?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thou art in the kingdom, in power, and in glory, amen.
Please, George, and the pledge from each of us. A pledge from each of us.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our regular session agenda is the approval of minutes of the meeting that we had on June 2.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Is that June 8?
June 8.
June 8, that was the executive session.
You.
I have a correction.
Okay, alright.
Third paragraph. I stated a position that I really would like reflected in the minutes. My position was pretty much agreeing with what Jeff had stated.
I can go back and correct that and present it again at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that. We just had presented with the correction. So we'll just table this for now.
I was gonna say, when we pull the correction?
We'll pull. Okay. Next, we have the vote, and I'll be real mention even though we come up with the next meeting as well. The reason for the executive session minute on June 8th was to consult with town council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Next on our agenda is the approval of the regular session minutes of June 8.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the regular session minutes by Councilmember Goyas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for that. The record should have the vote unanimous. Alright, next is number two on our agenda is a motion, 2020-17, motion approving Pop's Kitchen to place tables and chairs on sidewalk of Gay Street. They didn't want them in there.
If you want them to sit here or up there?
Bring it right up here. Cool, cool. Bobbham?
Thank you.
You all just, after you get settled, introduce yourself and we'll...
I'm Bobb Back, how are you doing?
It's fine.
I'm Kelly Beck.
Okay, thank you very much, Bobbham Kelly. Okay. Who is going to take the lead here?
I'll take it, Mayor. The, and you jump in, Dave. In your...
Do you?
The Vex came to the findings on back, I want to say February, March. And things kind of went on the screeching halt of COVID-19. But they came in and opened a new restaurant over on Gay Street. They have interest in placing tables and I believe a bike rack outside the premises. So the instruction they were given, if you go through the packet, you can see the pictures. They take the tape measure. There's significant space. So I don't see any issue with this based off prior precedent on what we've done. Again, we brought them before us tonight and I was at 1% of the case that they'd like to have, I think it's three tables?
Four.
Four.
Four tables and eight bike racks.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Well, certainly, any questions anyone has? Tables and chairs on our sidewalk for dining and relaxing purposes have just, it's been, it's been growing, but it's been growing exponentially since the coronavirus. And as a response to it, I received many compliments on the, I'll call it relaxed and friendly atmosphere that it contributes to our downtown environment. So, I mean, that's, that was prior to, obviously, anybody knowing that you proposed this, but it's been a little, at least five fashion. I know you all heard, mine's been, people been very positive about being able to either relax or dine outside for carryout or for something that they ordered in a restaurant, now that they have options that are using both.
It is the same thing as an old...
We had two tables brought over from De Novos so that the pictures could be taken. And then, of course, with everything with COVID-19, we brought those tables back to be able to do outside dining at De Novos. So I was waiting for the approval today, and once I get that, I will be ordering four tables that look identical.
Not in color?
Not in color. Go with a different color. The exact same table.
This space seems to be separate from the sidewalk. This is, this is...
That was my question. It's standard, if you tell from the picture that you have...
You have a sidewalk and then you have this space.
If you see the yellow line, then there's a space out front. That's correct.
And they're asking to place tables not in the sidewalk, but in this space?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which is their personal property, right?
Well, it's, actually, the way that, when that building was constructed and we redid the work on Gay Street, that was a question for the builder of the building of 15 Gay Street where they're gonna be the tenants, how we were gonna do that front. And coming straight out with that concrete area that the tables are going on. And then the sidewalk was what was determined at the time. So they actually have a, like a front veranda or a front patio, if you will. They ended up with that, but that wasn't on the original plan. That was a result of the reconstruction of Gay Street and, you know, just to transition on Gay Street to the street from there. So they ended up with a new sidewalk there plus that patio area. And it seems to fit real well there. The tables are composite material. You couldn't move them if you wanted to. We'd need four or five of us to pick them up. So I don't see that as a hazard, like moving around on the sidewalk. And they have more than the ADA distance they need on the sidewalk. They have 40 inches outside of the tables, you know, not interfering with the tables, which is, which we asked them to provide us with, that intervention.
Going forward, this space will be maintained by the property owner?
Yes, it is the property owner's property. That's correct.
And I think what you were referring to there is like keeping it clean. That's obviously, and of course, with any establishment serving food, that's a kind of prerequisite anyway, but I think that's something that Councilwoman wants to emphasize is that we're very fortunate for all the people that we have traditionally had in town and all the more that we're expecting. Cleanliness is a high priority. And everybody pitches it, you know, obviously the property owners, but also our guests and citizens.
You're looking at opening when?
As long as all of our equipment that we've ordered arrives, we do hope to be open within the month. Yeah.
I asked them back in February, March, if I thought it'd be a nice touch, provide you all with a copy of the menu. Okay, so you got that down as well?
I think it's great. They're near the sidewalk, I think that you need to come here, but...
Yeah, I think it's good, I need it too. You need a motion to approve, Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve so they can go ahead and get started.
And we have a motion to approve the four tables in front of the, what will be now known as Pop's Kitchen, 15 Gay Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations. And we look forward to your opening and hope you have a very positive experience.
Absolutely, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So the way this COVID's really put us.
It's a damper on trying to get it there.
It'll make it all the more memorable when time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening.
Good luck. Appreciate that.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, our two public hearings will take one at a time. The first will be regarding the change, a very strict change to our elections code to make absentee ballots out, making the ability to vote by absentee ballot basically very simple and not restricted. And we will now open the public hearing. And Kelsey, do we have any questions that were submitted beforehand?
Not to my knowledge, I'm not sure if you guys have received any.
No.
So we haven't gotten anything from state or county?
No. Does anyone have any comments or questions tonight? I know we went over, went first with interviews, but the idea is that we're just trying to bring our code into compliance with what is the reality nowadays, where in the old days, you had to be out of town or have an excuse for absentee ballot. Now it's a matter of personal choice. Just get them to the polls. Yep, just whatever way it works for people. Need a motion? Yes. I make a motion that we approve this...
Do we want to give it a minute?
Yes.
Do we want to give it just a couple of minutes in case people are typing?
I've just posted that the public's hearing is open, so I will let you guys know if anything comes through.
Alright.
It seems pretty straightforward, but just in case we get a question?
Just to provide a little bit of clarity, the language in the, that section of the code that will be changed will be to eliminate, as you indicated, Mayor, to eliminate the requirement for reasons to vote absentee and just simply say that anyone can vote absentee as long as they meet the particular requirements.
On the other part.
Yes. But they're less... Yes, Chapter 12.
You still haven't received any questions?
We have not.
Online?
Okay.
I make my motion now. Okay, proceed with the ruling. I make my motion to approve ordinance 2020-02. Okay. Chapter 12.
2020-04. 2020-04.
Okay, yeah, we went in the right numbers. Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Brittingham to approve the amendment to our election sections of our code, basically allow absentee ballots at the discretion of qualified voters in the town of Berlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, the vote was unanimous for. Thank you very much.
Did you want to close the hearing?
Again, we now officially close the hearing. Right? But we're about to start, again, we're about to start another hearing, a second hearing, on a different matter. This is a Resolution 2002, rezoning of County Tax Map, which could be all the parcels and all that. Basically, it's the acreage that's immediately north of US 50 at the top of Maryland 818, which is North Main Street. That was brought into town, I think it was year 2000. At that time, it was, it was Zone M1, because the uses were not clear as to what they'd be. There were a number of things being considered, but this is the first where we have a very specific, very real and very beneficial use in the advocacy. So when we start talking about the advocates, are asking that it be rezoned from M1 Industrial to B2 Shopping.
No, I want to make one clarification. It's M1A Industrial District.
Okay, M1A. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could address you all prior to beginning this hearing, I just want to go over with the council what the land use article, the state of Maryland statute, Land Use Article, Section 4-Hash 204 regarding amendments of zoning classifications required. The council may grant an amendment to change an existing zoning classification based on a finding of a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood or that there was a mistake in existing, in the existing zoning classification. And in so doing, the state law requires that the council make findings of fact that address population change, the availability of public facilities, present, future transportation patterns, compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area, the recommendation of the planning commission, and the relationship of the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. And I believe in your packet, you have a set of findings of fact that were made by the planning commission after its hearing on January 8th, which addresses all those criteria. And the planning commission found that there was a mistake in this zoning classification.
Alright, so now we are going to open the public hearing. Again, if anyone in the public has any questions they would like for us to address, please type them in and Kelsey will inform us of those questions.
And again, nothing submitted ahead of time?
Okay, nothing ahead of time.
Yep.
Wait a few minutes.
Yep.
And Dave, if you'll introduce the guest and explain, you know, basically the background.
Mr. Chris Carvaz with the Atlantic Group. He's the land planner for the property owner. And I guess, are we in the public hearing already?
Yes.
I guess, Dave, Gaskell and I had spoken. We will let Mr. Carvaz give you a little presentation of what, upon rezoning, what the plans might be for the area for the parcels.
Thank you. Chris?
Good evening. It's Dave's day, my name is Chris Carvaz, Principal of the Atlantic Group and Associates, and also here representing Delmar Group Management Properties. As detailed in the staff report, we seek to obtain rezoning of land situated at the intersection of 818 and Route 50, known as Tax Map 25, Parcels 4 and 464. I believe you were passed out a map exhibit that better illustrates those parcels. Parcel 4 is approximately 24.16 acres and Parcel 461 is approximately 2.51 acres. The total acreage is approximately 26.67 acres. It is requested that the properties be rezoned from M1A Industrial District to B2 Shopping District. I do have also included in your packet a town zoning map that does illustrate the area is M1A. But we were before this board back in 2014 and were here to rezone the properties to B2 right on the corner, formerly known as the Houw Properties. So I think this is just a little bit outdated. There is B2 zoning on the southwest corner and, as I just mentioned, a little on the northwest corner of 818 and Route 50. As Mr. Gaskell discussed, pursuant to Maryland Code, we must prove to this board that there was a mistake in the zoning. It's my understanding that this area was Zone M1A for a proposed industrial project around 1998 that was never undertaken. So for those reasons, obviously, there appears to be a mistake in the zoning. And with current plans around that intersection, I understand there's recently been a 7-Eleven approved. It appears that the intersection is becoming more B2 or commercial. As was discussed on the prior rezoning for the Houw Properties, that was adjacent to these properties known as Parcels 145 and 460 that are directly on the corner. There was a finding of facts that I think sets some precedent for this rezoning. They're also included in your packet. I'll just briefly read those for the record. A, pursuant to annexation agreement dated December 20, 1999, the agreement, the properties were annexed into the town on the premise that the properties would become a portion of a planned industrial park to be named Berlin Technology Campus. B, pursuant to letters from the town to the petitioners dated December 20, 1999 and March 2, 2000, water and wastewater services were to be extended to the properties as a result of the annexation. On March 8, 2000, the petitioners executed an easement to the town to facilitate the extension of water and wastewater services to the property. Not until June 20, 2012, did the town inform petitioners that water and wastewater services were assumed to be extended to the properties. E, at no time since the annexation of the properties into the town has an industrial park of any kind been planned, designed, and submitted to the town for review and approval. F, the town does not at this time anticipate any industrial park on the properties nor does the town believe that such a use is most desirable for the town or the properties. G, the highest and best use for the properties is commercial, making a change in zoning classification from M1A Light Industrial to B2 Shopping District, the most appropriate for the properties in the town. And finally, H, there is a public necessity for the requested change in zoning classification, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice require that a finding of mistake occur and the properties receive a change in zoning classification for M1A Light Industrial to B2 Shopping District. So for these same reasons, we respectfully request that the board recommend rezoning these parcels 4 and 461 from M1A to B2 Shopping District. And with that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about our request or the future planning.
Share with us future planning.
Okay, also, within your package should be a colored exhibit of the properties where we are proposing to do what I would call a neighborhood shopping center. We are proposing three head sites for individual commercial uses, being Parcels 1, 2, and 3, closest to the corner of Route 50 and 818. And we anticipate some more shopping center-like uses to be back on Parcels 4 and 5. So the intent is that we're coming before the town here in the near future with a neighborhood-scale shopping center, not something that you would envision to be similar to, say, the Walmart shopping center. Lot of architecture that you would find relating to Berlin, a lot of open space, a lot of features that I think will add to the attractiveness of Berlin.
Did you present this earlier?
There was something similar to this that, you know, has since been modified, where we did have a service road coming into the parcels, but it's been reconfigured a little bit, but it's generally the same.
I mean, you presented this before the council?
No, no, just the two parcels that were owned by Mr. Philip Houw, that was Parcels 145 and 460.
I was just, I was wondering where Lisa Hall's name, some of the...
The council adopted those findings back in 2014, in regard to those...
And that's an adjoining parcel. This mall went all the way down in the corner of 818 and 50.
That, in this particular illustration, is the area shown in pink?
It's basically Parcel 1 and Parcel 6 of the plan, with the exception of the apartment building that's been consolidated into Parcel 1 as part of the Metico property.
The building that a lot of people locally call the McDonald House? You familiar with that white two-story apartment building? That's in that previously, just outside of that previously rezoned parcel, part of this parcel.
I think we have a question. Tony, we have a question from the public?
Yes, Tony Weg has asked, are water and wastewater already extended there or will that take money and work? Will the developer fund this and how will it be connected to downtown? Will another, will it be another strip mall? So I guess the first question is...
Start with thinking one at a time.
Yeah, is wastewater already extended, water and wastewater already extended there?
Yes, they are, but basically, yes, and they have been. The wastewater was extended for Sunrise Church a number of years ago.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, what's next?
Next question, will the developer fund this, but that's already? And how will it connect to downtown, which is part of that? And then, will it be another strip mall?
And again, we're not looking to propose the classical strip mall. Again, we're trying to create a different experience, what I would call more of a neighborhood shopping center. Nothing similar to what you would see, you know, at the Walmart shopping center here on Route 50. Nothing similar to that.
Now, when you use the word neighborhood, I envision like sidewalks and people being able to walk to these things. Is that what we're gonna see along this main corridor, is sidewalks accessible?
Not on the main corridor. Within the property, you know, we expect that to incorporate some plaza-like features for like, it's common now, outdoor seating for a lot of establishments, businesses. Again, a lot of green space for activities, you know, as people are visiting the shopping center. But it is a shopping center to provide more conveniences for the town, but also to, again, take advantage of that intersection and to get people to stop at Berlin and maybe, you know, visit other businesses downtown.
He has a follow-up question. How will the people of Berlin connect to it? Will the downtown corridor be considered when getting there?
Well, 818 is Main Street all the way from US 50, US 50 to the north, to 113 down by the ball fields to the south. So there is a direct connection that way. And from the plans, because I'm not sure how much the public can tell, you would then cross US 50, continue up that little extension, right, by Sunrise Church. And where Sunrise Church is on the east, then this proposed neighborhood shopping center would be immediately to the west and all access would be from 818, not directly from 850. And that corridor is how you get to various properties that are developed. Is that accurate?
Correct, because then only one access point off of about 818, directly crossed from the entrance of Sunrise Church.
And the other thing I can say is that, and this has been a long time in developing, and it has, and we're all very pleased that it's happened. Downtown is not conducive as a shopping center area. It's not for, you know, what is called, big grocery markets and all your traditional things like that. Downtown is, has developed very, you know, we're very proud and very well as dining, you know, indoor and outdoor, and also what I call boutique shopping and specialty shops. And that is what we're bringing downtown. And the people that are brought downtown for those purposes, whether the local or visitors, also often dine in downtown. Here, this is more traditional in that if you're going to this area, you're not going to boutique shopping. You're basically doing your, you know, I'll call it weekly family shopping and things of that nature. I think that's a...
Correct, I mean, there could be a mix of uses we anticipate, you know, from restaurants to retail to pharmacy uses, markets, you know, a variety of uses. uses, markets, you know, a variety of uses are planned to, again, just serve the population of Berlin.
Tell me, I'm sitting here thinking, and the first thing coming through my mind is the shopping center in Cambridge that's being renovated right now?
Well, I mean.
What is going to be different in your shopping center than a shopping center like that?
I haven't really driven by since they've started renovation and noticed, you know, it does have a better appearance as you're driving by. I can't say I've really been into the shopping center to compare it to what we're proposing, but, you know, again, I think they're doing something beneficial for, you know, a vacant, well, property not being best utilized. But I can't really compare because I haven't been on the site, unfortunately.
He had another question, Mr. Weg. How does a walking person or biking person connect what sidewalks?
To this shopping center, is that the question?
Yes, I believe that's what he's referencing.
Well, something that needs to be made clear here is that we have, for walking and for bicycles, that is what the properties in downtown Berlin have been revitalized for over the last, particularly, 20 years. And our commercial development on US 50 and US 113 is, we're not encouraging people to walk across those highways or along them. That is, they are, they have been, they are the secondary development, commercial development in our town, and we first started at the core, but we're walking and biking are appropriate, but when you're on a major highway, and there's two of them, the two major highways, north-south and east-west, in coastal Maryland, are go-through Berlin. So that's what this is about.
And if I could add, this is, you know, the type of development that allows the commercial uses to come that require the necessary parking that maybe downtown Berlin right now cannot provide.
We have a question from a Robert Johnson. What type of businesses do you anticipate being a part of the shopping center?
As I mentioned, we're envisioning a mix of uses. Really, it's open to anything permissible in the B2, but, you know, we're targeting, you know, uses such as restaurants, pharmacies, retail, gift shops, you know. It's open at this point. We don't have anything specifically nailed down yet until the rezoning is in place, but, you know, again, we're going to be looking to provide services that we think are needed or desired for the community around Berlin.
And I would like to point out that whatever his proposal is, is going to have to go before the planning commission.
And I'd like to add as well, to piggyback on Mr. Gaskell, the intent tonight is to discuss the rezoning of the property, not the conceptual of what he's doing. Now, I'm going to speak candidly about something. Again, it's very preliminary, and I can tell you the conceptual diagrams, photos that he shared with David Hargreaves and I, I think it's on run. But again, that's conceptual, and you're not there yet. But we're here tonight to discuss the rezoning of the property.
Yes.
I have another question posed, but it's not necessarily in regard to the rezoning, so it's up to you. It's about vacancies in the area and how you expect to fill spaces when there's already so many unoccupied spaces.
That's not, quite frankly, this is a different type of business development, and compared to even 20 years ago, there are much fewer commercial vacancies than there have been compared to 30 years before, but no comparison. Most of this town is closed up and used for warehousing. So there's just no comparison where we are now and where we continue to try and go. And I think that's something that if someone understandably has not lived here very long, they wouldn't necessarily know the direction the town's been going for the last generation.
I have a question about B2. Now, B2 is similar to what we have downtown, correct?
Downtown is B1 Town Center District.
Okay. Go ahead.
B2 allows a few more uses, but basically everything that the Town Center District allows, the start of the B2 shopping district, the uses say, everything you can do in B1, you can do in B2, and then it expands on that.
So these could potentially include, like, rentals and things of that nature above the shops, correct?
It is a permitted use in the B2.
Right. So if that were to be the case, I would like to see some interconnectability to downtown. But if it's a more industrial style or more drive-through feature, I can see where you wouldn't have those things. But if it has any residential use, I think that there should be something in place to be able to connect the downtown to your shopping center.
We'd love that. That'd be an opportunity to explore in the future.
I realize that's not what we're doing today.
Yeah, we have a little bit of a gap between, you know, I guess, Old Ocean City Boulevard and Route 50. Maybe over time, things change, and if the project can be connected, that would be great.
And the other question I have is, what phase in the process do we have the traffic study in place that evaluates that intersection? I know we've talked about that with some previous annexations and things of that nature, but.
As part of their development plan, they would be submitting an access management plan to State Highway, and one of the requirements of that access management plan is a traffic study. So usually, and I'll, again, speak for Chris, I know the way he's done projects in the past, State Highway takes a little longer than some other, you know, it goes, some of it goes over to Baltimore, some of it stays here on the shore in their reviews. So he'll probably be, I would guess, submitting that, or he's already had talks with them about that, leading up to whatever he's going to do to submit to the town to Planning Commission. So you have that approved, Planning Commission can react to that, we like that, we don't like that, but that's usually the way it goes. That access management plan has to go to State Highway. Both of these roads are their responsibility. 818 is a Maryland state road, and US 50 they're responsible for. And we've had meetings on-site, over a year ago, we were on-site, standing on that corner with State Highway people, and because at one point they were going to relocate the ditch there, I guess those plans have changed some, but the entrance off 818, that's changed a number of times from State Highway's input, based on what the owners wanted to do with the property. So that's a moving target right now, but State Highway will have to have a traffic study for it.
Yeah, rest assured that, you know, to get an entrance permit, it's going to, you know, need to be approved by SJA, and all requirements based upon any traffic impacts will have to be mitigated.
And Dave, can you keep us up to speed on that?
Sure.
And let us know when there's an opportunity for comment?
Yep. And, you know, I will say also, when we, this originally, Mr. Carbo was going to, we were going to try and do this in the March at a mayor and council meeting, and then the restrictions, the COVID restrictions took place, and we finally got it back on one of your agendas. But when we picked that day, I contacted Janet Popman, who's the, you know, Assistant District Engineer for Access Management, Abas Alzberg, and Dan Wilson, who works with her, and just told them what was coming up. Just, that's what we've tried to do over the last number of years, is we didn't always have a communication open with SJA, but we've managed to do that over the last five or six years. So they said, just keep me posted also. They already knew, you know, some of the details from Mr. Carbo, but they said, just let us know how it goes with the rezoning. They like to know what's coming too, so they work with us well, with Jeff and I, and all the department heads on 346's work over by the hospital that's just completing, and what's upcoming for 376 too. They work closely with us on that, so they're always grateful to hear what we're doing. I reached out to them first.
Thank you. Seeing other questions in the public, does the council have any other questions for Mr. Carbo?
Realistically, this is a downswing.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, obviously, things have changed considerably since 2000.
I'm going to think back then, it still is. I agree with you.
All right, so do we have a motion?
We should close the hearing.
Oh, yeah. We now officially close the public hearing, and now we proceed with the council's wishes on this resolution.
I would make the motion to pass Resolution 20-02, changes in zoning classifications on the properties from M1A industrial district to B2 shopping.
Mr. Pernell, could I urge you to add to your motion that you would adopt the findings and facts?
Yes.
Of the planning commission from their hearing on January 8, 2020, and the findings and fact that the mayor and council made regarding parcels 460 and 145 in 2014. That'd be fine.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Pernell to rezon the parcels for us, from M1A industrial to B2 shopping. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The record shows that the vote was unanimous. Well, thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate your time, and we look forward to hearing more as things develop.
I look forward to it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Jeff from number four, who's going to take?
It'll be Mary.
Okay. Mary Baldwin, our Assistant Town Administrator. This is a discussion regarding the 2020 municipal election status.
First, I'd just like to say that this is, this is something that I worked on, kind of in an abundance of caution, rather than waiting until the last minute to try to figure out what we're doing with the election. I based this on a lot of assumption about what might be happening with the coronavirus pandemic at that time. So having said that, most municipalities are taking one of three approaches to their elections this year. A number have already been rescheduled, that were scheduled for the spring, right in the middle of the pandemic, for obvious reasons. Some others have shifted to a purely mail-in ballot format, and those that are regularly scheduled for the fall are kind of looking at this in some of the same ways that I have. And that is, we will, at this point, we're going to assume that some of the social distancing restrictions, mask use, that kind of thing, will still be in place. We are going to, other than that, proceed as normal with the polling places as scheduled. Obviously, we'll use the same tactics that most of the retail establishments that you see have used, with tape on the floor and encouraging people to maintain social distance. If face masks are still being required, obviously, our poll workers will wear them. We will require anyone coming in to vote to wear them. If they don't have one with them, we'll do our best to provide disposables to make it the accommodation as easy as possible. We will encourage absentee ballot voting. Anyone who is a registered voter of the town, meeting the minimum requirements, can request an absentee ballot. They do not have to actually come to the polls in person. That will hopefully, if there are folks who, even if all of this has been lifted, there will be people who will still have concerns because of their own, you know, personal considerations, who may not want to appear in person. We will make that very easy for them by allowing them to apply for an absentee ballot, as we always do. And that is basically it. Should we get, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Just one thing, I think one thing would be a good opportunity to let people know that we have, of the two polling places, one is new.
Yes, that is true, and that, and a lot more information about the election will be coming out as normal over the next few months. But to the mayor's point, District 3 and 4 voters will be voting at the Berlin Police Department this year, or hopefully ongoing. It just, the site works better for a number of reasons than the multipurpose ability that we had used in the past.
And the other poll will be?
At Buckingham. Districts 1 and 2 will be at Buckingham Presbyterian, as they have been. So again, a lot of this is being done on speculation about what might be happening in October. As we've all seen in the past few months, things can change on a weekly basis, so we can't really predict where we'll be in October, but hopefully, we'll be as prepared as possible.
Does anyone have any questions for Mayor?
I have one. If we had to adopt option two, how early in the process could keep us on track when we have to do that?
That would have to be fairly early, because there are some steps that we would need to take. We could still maintain the same deadlines that we're working with, that really wouldn't need to change. What would need to change is kind of on the, behind the scenes with actually getting the ballots ready to be printed, and of course, all of that happens sort of at the last minute anyway. The regular filing deadline for candidates is a full month ahead of the election, but you can't print the ballots until that deadline is passed, no matter what. But as long as we prepare for it ahead of time, it's just a matter of sending the final details, you know, to whoever does the printing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mayor? All right. Next, we're at five on the agenda, Department Administrator and Town Administrator's report.
Mayor Council, I have just a couple of things. From the vibing wells, the Buzz Meadery opens this Friday, located next to the pit stop. They brew honey and using locally sourced honey and fruit. That's down south on 113, down in John Gerson's property is located. This week is Pollinator Week, and we will have ideas for pollinator gardens at the Walker Center, and fun facts in the shops, shop windows, and also with social media posts. The Water Resources Department, they prepared a water link here on South Main today. I'm going to stop there for a second, stand up though. Will Meadows is here. He is an intern that is being funded by Maryland Coastal Bays. He is a, I believe, a junior at Salisbury University.
Yes.
He's from Southern Maryland, and he's here specifically with the Water Resources Department, focused on one thing, that's stormwater. And then in turn, he has some additional duties, some fun stuff to do, and that's the Sustainable Maryland Program, get us updated on our application, so I do welcome Will. He was out there today. He was trying to look like he was getting dirty, but he did do too well. Okay? Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
The Water Resources Department power washed the well houses, and they helped locate sewer on Washington Street. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Do we have any departmental reports?
That was it.
That was it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I don't have any comments. Do you have any comments tonight?
Mayor, do you want to acknowledge your Keep America Beautiful letter?
Well, that's all I have. Go ahead.
Okay. The mayor has composed a letter to the Keep America Beautiful folks in Stanford, Connecticut. I'll read the letter. I'm writing to request that the town of Berlin, Maryland be named an affiliate of the Keep America Beautiful Network. Our town has been long known for its attractive historic buildings, trees, and natural landscaping. In the past decade, there have been a widespread and successful community effort not only to preserve, but to enhance our historical and environmental heritage. Working closely with our local and regional historic and environmental nonprofits, the town of Berlin has embarked on a number of initiatives to make meaningful progress in these areas. Several years ago, we made a public commitment to the 21st Century Goals that we define as environmental stewardship and economic development. In our experience, they are two equally important sides of the same coin. Both are necessary and important if our community is to be both environmentally and economically sustainable for generations to come. We form a Grow Berlin Green team that has been at the forefront in educating and encouraging our residents and businesses about the permanent benefits of strong environmental stewardship and practices and policies. The town has also led the effort to make our historical, architectural, and cultural heritage a foundation of first, our revitalization, and now ultimately our renaissance that has brought pride, economic growth, and beauty to our 150-year-old community. These values and goals are recognized and evident in every neighborhood of our diverse citizenry and community. We hope that you look favorably upon this request and invite you and affiliates to visit and dine.
Thank you. All right. As we move along the agenda, I don't have any comments for this evening. Comments from the council?
I have a comment. I have a comment to the staff. Not only department heads, I'm speaking to all town staff at this time. This has been a trying time for us as the town. And I know it has been a trying time for you all, sat up with the responsibility of the daily operations of this municipality. But I think you have did a tremendous job in addressing the concerns, dealing with COVID, trying to keep staff and the public safe. And I just want you all to know that we appreciate your efforts, and we see the work that you do. And thank you. Maybe that will help us start the next fiscal year on the same foot or with the same enthusiasm as this year is in. And I would like to think it is in a good place. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say one thing. I like the idea, any of the year, on the big year, starting the year, step ahead. So I'm going to sweeten the pot a little bit. Haven't even really discussed it with Mary yet. But next, a week from Thursday's, what date is that?
The 2nd.
July the 2nd. I call it the annual, the 10th Annual Milkshake Day. So you all are invited. So next, a week Thursday, for the new folks in the press and for Will, I make milkshakes. Might give you one as well, okay? But to echo your comments on something, the, I can't speak for every employee, but I feel I can get probably 99.9%. There's been great concern through this entire pandemic, and there remains great concern. The folks, I think, are to be commended because they've adapted and heeded the advice, so. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, two things real quick. Last week, one of our officers was involved in a bad situation. You can expand on him for a moment. I also understand that he saved an infant the very next day.
I never heard of that.
There was a choking infant, because I had contacted him just to check and make sure that he was okay. And then he told me about it the very next day, that there was an issue with another child that he was able to resuscitate and get her to care in the city. So check into that, make sure the child's okay. I think it should be recognized for all that they have to put up with, especially in this time that we're working in. And secondly, real quick, I just wanted to say that this is Kelsey's birthday, and she's waiting, there's two little children in home waiting to see their mother, so let's speed this along.
They're already in bed, but thank you.
Wake them up. That's a celebration. Happy birthday, though.
Thank you.
I didn't know that either.
I have nothing.
I'm just saying, thank you, anything else?
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Did we, Kelsey, did we have any comments submitted from the public?
Nothing further, nope.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the press, attendants, tonight?
New to the chair?
Questions or journal?